Mr. Darby, I see you on the WebEx call and I also see you on the voting module.
Welcome to the Bossier City Council meeting Tuesday, August 4th at 3:00, year 2020. We'll have the invocation by Councilmember Scott Erwin, the pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Thomas Harvey. Please stand.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us and for all the blessings that we have here in Bossier City. Well, we pray for a quick and successful vaccine and treatment of the virus, Lord. Well, we pray for those who are affected by the virus, for those who've lost jobs, for those who are sick, Lord. May you give them quick resolutions. And, Lord, we pray for wisdom for our nation in this time and for our state and for us in this council meeting today. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Montgomery?
Here.
Mr. Larkin?
Here.
Mr. Erwin?
Here.
Mr. Darby? Mr. Darby, are you on mute? Mr. Darby? I see him there, but he's not. I can't hear him. Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Free?
Here.
Mr. Harvey?
Here.
All present.
Mr. Darby, can you hear us? Sometimes he couldn't hear with a mask, so...
I'm gonna text him.
We tested it this morning and made sure that everything could work and you could hear better.
Tell him it's not supposed to be on his ears.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the minutes for the July 21st, 2020.
Go ahead.
Dispense with the reading.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote. Approve the agenda.
Make motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
I can't hear him.
Have you talked to him today?
Mm-hmm.
I texted him. I haven't got nothing from him, though.
I can see him on there.
He votes?
And he's voting.
Oh, really?
Yeah, he's voting.
He said he can hear everything. He texted me. He said he can hear everything.
I believe we have a guest today that will give us a legislative update. Ms. Corley, welcome.
Thank you, members and mayor, for allowing me a few minutes to make a brief comments about the recently ended regular and special sessions. Strange times right now, but we did start session on March the 9th, worked for seven days, and we adjourned for six weeks under the stay-at-home order and came back on May the 4th to take up the remaining legislation that could be done. Approximately half of the bills that were filed made it through the process. A lot of it, the focus became the CARES Act funding from the federal government, limitation of liability immunity for cities, for restaurants, for any type of business dealing with PPE and the COVID situation. We had some local bills, some local issues we were tackling as well. And then we came back into special session. It was only the second time in history that the legislature called themselves back into session with the agenda primarily focused on revitalizing the economy and a focus on small business. Some of the highlights from the regular session that affect us directly. Normally, House Bill 1 and the state's budget, and House Bill 2 and 3, the state's capital outlay budget are passed in the regular session. We didn't have enough time to do that. So our efforts shifted to the special session where our capital outlay discussions took place. I'll get to that in the special session discussion. One bill that the President of the Senate filed, and you usually don't go against the President of the Senate, but the clerk brought this to my attention as well. There was a bill to allow the Lafayette Consolidated Employees to shift their new hires from the MERS program to the PERS program. It could have cost the system money. Fortunately, Senator Peacock and Senator Mills from up here on the Retirement Committee and amended the bill so it wouldn't affect us, along with several other cities who are in the MERS system, for all the Lafayette employees that were left in it. So that was a successful bill for us during the regular session. Representative Doty Horton filed a bill to redo the authority of Cypress Black Bayou. She had not spoken to me. She had not spoken to the city nor to the parish, but the bill basically would have taken our appointments away, the school board and the parish, and reconfigured how the district operated. I requested that she not advance the bill until we had a meeting with the city officials, the council, parish, parish officials, school board, and whomever else was involved in this, and she did. So the bill did not advance. She did not get it into the special session in June. We're talking about a special session in October. I don't know what the legislature is going to do as far as content matter for that session, but this is something we're going to have to keep on our radar for a discussion on what position we will take when that bill comes back. There were a number of cyber-related bills. I think that bodes well for us. The legislature realized there was a disconnect through the state and the legislature on communication, on all cyber activity in the state as it relates to curriculum and programs. I think this is an opportunity for the Cyber Innovation Center, for the city and for the parish, to participate at a different level to identify opportunities for us with the state. You know, LSU is competing as well on that subject matter, and I think obviously we have a better story to tell. So I'll continue monitoring this new committee that will meet in the interim. In general, the Public Works Bid Law was raised from 150,000 to 250,000. They'll begin the Consumer Price Index adjustments in February of 2025. I think this is also going to be helpful for the city. Sports wagering, our casino industry here and statewide, was successful in getting the sports wagering ballot initiative on the November 3rd ballot. So each parish will decide if they want to have that or not. So you'll see that also. COVID again was the focus. They allowed for, the legislation passed to allow for you to teleconference in certain instances because obviously a lot of local governments could not meet. State committees could not meet. The Bond Commission is actually piloting a program. We did the July meeting via Zoom, and Bossier City had items on it, so I was able to participate via Zoom, and it went well. They may move to some of that while we're dealing with the pandemic. Broadband was also another big issue, and I just saw an article where we actually got accolades on our coverage in this area, but the rural parish is statewide. Virtual learning, telemedicine, we lack that in the rural areas in our state. So there was a broadband bill that passed that allows any electric cooperative to use their existing systems to partner with a communications company to expand it. That may help in some of the rural areas, and we have two study resolutions that will also make sure this goes forward. Tort reform was a big issue. I know a lot of you heard. This was championed by the business community. A bill passed. It was vetoed, and it ultimately passed in the special session. So they were able to tweak, the chairman was talking to me about, the President of the Council, I'm sorry, was talking to me about that before. They were able to get a comprehensive bill passed in the special session that did address some of the tort reform issues in our state. We adjourned on June 1st at 6:00 PM, and we went back in at 6:01 for 30 days. And I failed to mention, it was similar to what you deal with here. We had every other row, every two chairs. We were screened every day. So they did take precautions, and we went for 30 more days to finish the response from the recovery, federal dollars and capital outlay, among other things. The governor named the Louisiana Restore Commission to kind of tackle the economic fallout as a result of pandemic. The legislature had its own committee, Louisiana Economic Recovery Task Force. So the two were competing in some senses, but also working together on what legislation to pass that would help cities, you know, parishes, businesses to recover. I guess the biggest dispute between the governor and the legislature was Congress sent Louisiana $1.8 billion. The state used $900 million to plug their budget and allocated 810 to local government. The legislature passed a bill to take 300 of that, 300 million, to give to small businesses in the form of grants. Fortunately, with talking to the CFO and the mayor and others just now, we have gotten our money coming in from the state from the CARES Act dollars, and we will continue to get that. Originally, there was some concern they were going to run out. The next batch is first come, first served, and I know your administrative staff is ready to hit the send button. So the sooner we get it in, the better off we will be on reimbursements for costs that we've incurred as a result of COVID. I mentioned these study resolutions. When a legislator doesn't get their bill through, they introduce a study resolution to keep the discussion going on in the interim. So I'll be monitoring several. There's one, the Speaker of the House filed a bill to centralize sales tax collection. It did not advance, so he has named all the heads of the trade organizations for local government and for business to come up with a compromise. So we'll be monitoring that. There's also the police training, screening, and de-escalation task force to look at how law enforcement operates in the state as a result of all the rioting and other disturbances nationwide. I'll be monitoring that one as well. We got back into capital outlay, our Louisiana Technology Research Institute funding. We got the Jimmy Davis Bridge is back in. A new item, which has been vetoed a couple times, unfortunately is not vetoed this year because we did it a different way. We were able to get the street lighting project. Senator Peacock helped me with this, and we used surplus funds. So the Highway 71 street lighting project is going to be a reality since we cashed coming from the state. As I mentioned earlier, went to Bond Commission via Zoom in July. We got reauthorization for the Priority One money for LTRI and reauthorization for Jimmy Davis Bridge money. I suspect the governor will follow up with August or September recommendations on the bond portion. Both the Jimmy Davis Bridge and LTRI have a bond portion. There's a little bit of gamesmanship going on there because the legislature held back some money this year and created a surplus fund in case we have budget cuts mid-year. So I think the governor's holding back a little bit, too, until he recommends the remainder of projects to be funded. I'm not worried about it right now. I know the administration's going to proceed with the paperwork and our amended cooperative endeavor agreements. I think I hit all the highlights. There was also the frontline worker bill. I thought that was a significant one for our police and fire and EMS workers. Representative Sam Jenkins took a portion of the CARES Act funding and made that available as a stipend to employees who qualify for that. So that program is being administered, and hopefully some of our employees are going to be able to benefit from that. We'll have seven constitutional amendments on the ballot. As I mentioned, we're going to see on every parish ballot the sports wagering, among several others. I hope this was shared with you over the last several months. I submit these reports to the mayor and the city attorney. I know y'all get them. But I'm happy to answer any questions. And like I said, we're going to have Revenue Estimating Conference again in September. This is the body to tell us how much money the state has or doesn't have. That will determine if we go back into an October session, and I think that agenda will be dictated by Congress on any additional funding they may send back to local governments. Senator Cassidy has a bill that has a $500 million price tag, I know, to allow us to recoup lost revenue if that, in fact, has happened. I don't know if it's going to pass or not, but I know the governor, House and Senate are waiting to see what happens up in DC before we set an agenda for October. And I'm sorry for being long-winded. It was a long couple of sessions, but I'm happy to answer any questions or on any subject matter you may have about the session.
Mr. Wayne?
Yes, sir.
The one that Doty had, you said she was going to pull the city and who's the other?
School board and give control of the board to the parish.
Take it away from the levy board in the town of Benton, and the parish would have exclusive authority for all the appointments, which, if I may point out, since you're bringing this to light, over 80% of the revenue comes from the taxpayers of the city of Bossier.
Yeah, so...
Mr. Hall?
Well, one other thing that you need to be, the parish didn't ask for this.
No.
The parish did not ask for the, to take that authority away. It was something that was driven by people that live on Cypress that aren't happy with the board and that type of deal.
Oh, I believe me, I get calls all the time. I go out there every weekend, and I know a lot of them. But, yeah, guys, we need to call Doty about that because that's just, we need to have our representatives on there.
No, and I definitely could use some help on that. She caught me off guard. I told the city attorney. Normally, she would ask me or discuss something before. All of our members have never done that. She apologized profusely, and I do want all of you to know that. She pulled the bill immediately at my request and has had a meeting with some of the impacted parties since. She has requested one with the city. So any conversations you can have with her. I've shared the tax assessors revenue. David, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President gave to me.
Just David.
Yeah, David, I'm sorry. So I think I brought to light that 81% of our tax base is, you know, supports the district. So certainly, one representative, this is necessary from us. You know, I don't have a relationship with the school board. I don't know how they felt, but I do know the parish was opposed to this as well, which they're going to meet with her on this, too.
Yeah, like I said, I don't know how it happened. I don't, there's just so many questions going on about that board out on the lake, with the people on the lake, but...
Well, the board has done a magnificent job, and we can certainly look at the merits of where we were five or six years ago to where we are today, and I think the results speak for themselves as to the actions of that board. So that's the way I look at it.
Yeah, and I'll be seeking feedback from y'all in the coming months.
There's some small issues, but...
No, I appreciate it.
We'll call Doty on that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, too.
In light of, go ahead. Ms. Fernandez, if you wouldn't mind, I would like to recognize you for your efforts in securing, I believe it was over $3 million.
Three and a half.
Three and a half million dollars, and I think everybody should know. So would you?
We applied for. It was a lot of work, but we got it in. And then they came back, the state came back to us and told us we could also apply for benefits. So we went back and we did that, and we got 3.5 million.
But it was due to your perseverance and efforts of moving forward and saying, well, I'm going to go ahead and do it. So I wanted, on behalf of the council, to recognize you for those efforts.
Well, thank you. It was a lot of people involved. Brad sent me an email from Congressman Mike Johnson that had a phone number on it, and I just picked up the phone and called, and that started the whole thing. And Pam is the one who uploads all the documents. My staff all works hard to get the documents ready. So it was a joint effort.
We thank all those that were involved in that process. That's huge in this day and time, given the budgetary crisis that a lot of people are experiencing. So thank you.
Thank you.
We just wanted to recognize you.
Thank you.
All right, committee reports. Mr. Justin Haydel of Man Shack on the Walter O. Bigby Carriage Way update.
Thank you. Good afternoon, counsel. Should all have my little update there. You may have noticed the surveyors have been out staking the right-of-way for the Carriage Way. We wanted to do that for several reasons, so we could see that there weren't any conflicts with what is shown on the drawings, so we wouldn't have any surprises during construction. And we also want the utility companies that are relocating their infrastructure to know where the area is available for them to relocate to. So we also want to place a few signs along the way that says, "Future Corridor Walter O. Bigby Carriage Way," if that's all right with the city. Ben's having the signs made, and we'll go and put them out along the way. I don't think all of the stakes are going to survive until we start construction, but we'll try to keep most of them out there. Citizens Bank Drive, I have some sketches that I'd like to use to facilitate the conversation. The first is an aerial of what I call the field, and it shows Bingham Dentistry and the Green Acres Office Park. That's where the bridge actually lands and the connection is made to Benton Road, and then Citizens Bank Drive, which I have a sketch that shows the proposed layout of Citizens Bank Drive, which reduces the area encroaching upon the levee. So it keeps the road away from the levee to the maximum extent practical. Then you have the issue with how you're going to get underneath the bridge. Right now, the design of the bridge allows for nine feet of clearance. It's our recommendation that the city take measures to allow more than nine feet of clearance, because inevitably trucks are going to hit the bridge, then put the bridge out of commission. You got to spend money to fix it, a bunch of lawsuits. So we're recommending a minimum of 15 feet of clearance, and one of the options to do that is to build an underpass like you have on Hamilton Road. So I have a sketch that shows that as well, and as I said, that's just one of the potential options, and I'll discuss the other one later on. Union Pacific Railroad, of course, that's a major permit that is yet to be obtained. We resubmitted the documents, which they call the 30%, that's just their lingo, on July 14th. Their only issue that we got from them before that submittal was the drainage from what I call the field. They didn't want us draining any of the water into their railroad ditch, so we simply resubmitted and told them, "We're not going to." So the issue still remains of how we're going to drain the water from that field, and I've engaged Artman and Associates, a geotechnical engineering firm, to do an infiltration test, because everybody that's been out there, when you get a big rain, the water just kind of disappears. None of it really overflows onto Benton Road, so it's infiltrating into the ground. So we're doing a test to see how fast the water infiltrates into the ground, and if it can handle the design storm that DOTD requires, which is a 10-year storm event. An underpass will certainly require a pump station, because you got to drain the water out from underneath the pump station. I think it's worthy to note at this point that the city council, and Gordon Mosley gave me this, passed a Resolution Number 15 of 2020 regarding the exchange of the property Green Acres Office Park and all of that. And it says that the construction on the Citizens Bank Drive extension does not have to begin, or will begin, no later than 90 days after the substantial completion of the bridge. So that's a long time. You know, our schedule shows construction ending in the spring of 2024. And the reason I bring that up is because we have a lot of time to deal with the issues on Citizens Bank Drive to give us an opportunity to come up with the most economical solution for Bossier City. So there's no big rush. The utility relocations, you know, that's a major ongoing effort. You can look at the schedule and see, you know, what I've got there. Several of the utilities, and we brought it to the attention of the city, the mayor, the city attorney, and I know Pam's involved in it, to try to get the attention of a couple of the utilities. I won't mention them here, but I think Mr. Hall wanted us to prepare a letter for him to send to them. Under franchise agreements, they have to get their stuff out of the way, so we're going to go ahead and do that in hopes of moving that task along a little more quicker. The last time I was up here, we talked about the DOTD permits and how there's a bunch of those that we need. We need some information to submit with the permit applications. We've got some of it, but not all of it, but I've been told by the engineers that we should have everything by the end of this month, which will enable us to submit the permit applications. We've also got the levy board permit. There's been one change associated with that. You know, I said last time that the Corps wanted a seepage analysis, not only of the pump station, but also of the roadway. It mainly pertains to the drainage, because a lot of the drainage is 10 to 15 feet deep along the roadway. So we've enlisted Artman to do the seepage analysis, but they need some more soil borings. So we're going to have to do three more soil borings between Station 63 and 100, which is back up towards the Police Training Center, I believe, back up that way. And they'll be out there doing that, and hopefully we'll get the information so we can complete the seepage analysis and give the Corps what they need. You've got an item on the agenda today for, to approve Perlin Associates to design the lighting for the roadway portion of Citizens Bank Drive, of Walter O. Bigby. And just wanted to point out, you're also going to need lighting for Citizens Bank Drive, and we're going to try to make it all match. The bridge, the roadway, Citizens Bank Drive, whatever lighting is needed. But again, we're not in any rush on Citizens Bank Drive at this point. Then one more item that I've brought for your consideration, and you know, you got time to think about it, but I think it's a good deal. It's called value engineering. Whenever DOTD lets out a big project, they allow, and I've got the language from the DOTD manual attached to the agenda, they allow what they call value engineering, which states, "After award of the contract, the contractor is permitted to submit to the engineer written proposals for modifying the plan, specs, or other requirements of the contract for the purpose of reducing the total construction cost." You know, a lot of times contractors know how to build things better than engineers can design them, so you want to take an opportunity to let a contractor tell us, he may have a better way to do it, it's less expensive, it'll save you money. So there's a cost-sharing clause that we'd like to put into the contract documents, that any money saved as a result of an approved VE proposal, 50% of the savings, the contractor can't keep it all. You know, if it's a million dollars, you get a half a million, and he has a half a million. It's a million-dollar savings, so you get half, and he gets half of the savings. So I think it's a good deal, and it also allows us an opportunity... So I think it's a good deal, and it also allows us an opportunity in closing, like I said earlier, you know, we wanna look at all the options for building that bridge. What is the most economical way to do it and provide the clearance that you need? And it may be that a contractor proposes to actually raise the bridge. There's different ways that he may be able to accomplish that. So we wanna leave all the options open for dealing with the Citizens Bank Drive issue. So with that, any questions?
I just wanna make sure for the record, Mr. Hall, that it's a wonderful idea, the value engineering and the cost savings, but just to make sure if someone brings up that to us, that we've got all our i's dotted and t's crossed, you know, from a legal standpoint, that nobody can question what we're doing. That's all.
Yeah, we will submit the contract documents to city attorney prior to bidding.
Justin, building that underpass and a pump station, I can imagine that gets rather pricey, raising the bridge. I know that's gonna create issues in how much space you have and cost also. Citizens Bank Drive has two ways to get in and out, right?
Yes.
Connections. And it's mostly--
Well, not now.
Most of that traffic goes to office buildings.
Not now.
It doesn't?
It's a dead-end street right now.
But it doesn't have at Citizens Bank a way to turn at Citizens Bank and enter?
Well, it dead-ends. If you go down Citizens Bank Drive, it turns off to the north, and then it dead-ends.
But it will connect.
Yeah, we're gonna-- that's the connection point.
What I thought was if you just had a big bar so that trucks wouldn't hit the bridge, and if a truck was that large, it would enter the other way.
Well, that is one way to do it, but my understanding is inevitably, somebody's gonna hit that bridge.
There's no way they could, if you had that--
Oh, if you had the bar.
Yeah.
Yeah, they'll tear their truck apart.
And for maybe a hundred thousand, you could do it instead of 15 million.
Yeah, that's totally the city council's decision, the city's decision as to whether you wanna allow that kind of clearance. My understanding is 18-wheelers do use Citizens Bank Drive, and you're just giving them, and they gotta turn in there, back up and turn around. This just gives them another way. It's also UPS trucks, FedEx truck, that you're limiting access with the nine feet, so--
That's just a thought, yeah.
Yeah, like I said, we got plenty of time to discuss it.
Maybe have a turnaround, a cul-de-sac where they could turn. I don't know, before you got to it.
Well, we're gonna use that all in the value engineering. Scott?
Just a thought.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Good report.
Unfinished business?
Adopting ordinance appropriating $1.2 million from the Walter O'Bigby Carriage Way Fund to fund the completion of Phase One of the Walter O'Bigby Carriage Way. Final reading?
So moved. Second.
Questions from the audience? Okay, you'll recall, Mr. Roshenbach gave us a pretty detailed explanation as to the reason for these change orders and so forth, so last-- two weeks ago. Make sure there's no other questions. Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopting ordinance authorizing the repayment and reallocation of funding paid from the utility funds are proposed to be funded from utility funds for street and drainage projects. Final reading?
So moved. Second.
Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance to temporarily reduce the management fees paid to ASM Global to manage the Century Link Center from July 2020 through December 2020, and to extend ASM Global's contract for an additional three months until March 31st, 2021.
So moved. Second.
Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance to abandon a portion of an alley located within the East Shreveport subdivision, more particularly located to the rear of 501 Barksdale Boulevard. Final reading?
So moved. Second.
Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
New business? Witness opening of sealed bids for bid number P20-19 Waller Avenue Lift Station.
Counsel, the engineer's estimate for this project is $250,000, and there's one alternate. There's one addendum that provided a list of attendees to the mandatory pre-bid meeting, changes to concrete coating system, and updated the federal wage decision rates, plus provided questions and answers. This first bid is from Axis Construction LLC. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for $210,910.210.910. The next bid is from Dixie Overland Construction. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for $247,256.247.256. The alternate is for $30,397.50.30.397.50. And the last bid is from Pully Construction, Inc. They acknowledged the addendum. The bid bond is included. It's for $249,000.249.000. Alternate one is $22,195.22.195. Ask, did you accept the reading of these bids?
So moved. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance to declare that an emergency did exist in the city of Bossier City, which affected property, public health, and safety due to the requirement to repair a sewer main located on Stewart Avenue at a cost of $140,000 to come from the Sewer Capital Contingency Fund, and authorizes the city to enter into a contract with Pully Construction, Inc. for completion of work. First and final reading?
So moved. Second.
Questions from the audience? Questions from council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Approved zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by MPC, petitioner Mark Rogers, Bayou Ax Company, location 509 Barksdale Boulevard, Bossier City, Louisiana, 71112. Request conditional use approval for the sale of high-content alcohol for on-premise consumption at a bar.
So moved. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, any questions? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Approved zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by MPC, petitioner Jeremy Hawthorne, Knight Owl Properties LLC, location 905 Barksdale Boulevard, Bossier City, Louisiana, 71112. Request conditional use approval for the sale of high and low-content alcohol for on-premise consumption at a bar.
So moved. Second.
Questions from the audience?
I got one for Mr. Hall. I spoke with Jeremy, I guess it was early this morning. He was coming in from Oklahoma. How do we go about getting them approved into our-- the alcohol zoning portion, you know, where they can walk with their drink? They're gonna be one block off, right on Barksdale, I think it's Watson.
We'll have to propose a expansion of the zone to be approved by the council.
I know we said that we'd do that when-- as things come in, so.
What's the process? Just propose an ordinance?
Yeah, somebody's gonna have to propose an ordinance to expand it to whatever extent it is, you know? When I first proposed it, I proposed it for the whole district, and the council didn't like that, so I'll wait for one of y'all to propose it to the next block, or half-block, or six feet, or 10 feet. Or we can go back to my original thought and just do it for the whole district.
Should we use meters?
Yeah, that'd be fine with me.
Okay.
We'll have to get meter checkers for the police.
That is something, I mean, in all seriousness, we laugh, but obviously that has taken off down there and is growing, and it would be better to pass something with the anticipation of growth, rather than dealing with this section by section. It might even encourage more growth. So I would ask the council to strongly look at that and think about our future, because that's what we invested 15 million was for, the expansion of the downtown, so.
I also think that the opposition that we had to having this big area, they've kinda proven that their concerns, I mean, just didn't come to fruition. It's been a great addition to downtown. I think that's one of the things that definitely helps the business owners down there. I don't know of any problems that we've encountered because of the open containers, so.
It's a good point. Very good point. So, we'll talk.
Yeah, we'll talk.
All right.
I have a motion by Mr. Williams and a second by Mr. Harvey.
Any other further discussion? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance appropriating $66,000 from the Walter O'Bigby Carriage Way Fund to hire Purtle and Associates, LC, to design the lighting for the Walter O'Bigby Carriage Way road portion, and authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to execute the attached-- the contract attached here, too. First reading?
So moved. Second.
Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance to fund drainage improvements around the Clearwells at the Water Treatment Plant at a cost of $50,000 to come from the Water Capital and Contingency Fund, and authorizes the city to enter into a contract with Axis Construction for completion of work. First reading?
So moved. Second.
Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance to fund improvements to the Alligator Bayou Pump Station at a cost of $90,000 to come from the Sewer Capital and Contingency Fund. First reading?
So moved. Second.
Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance to reappropriate $40,000 from the Public Service Complex Generator Project and $15,000 from the Public Works Operating Fund to the Bossier Animal Control Building Project with funds for both projects, lest the Public Works Operating Fund being in the 2020 Sales Tax Capital Fund. First reading?
Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance to rescind ordinance number 89 of 2019. Motion by Mr. Larkin.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harwin.
Good afternoon, counsel. We are moving the funds that were originally allocated in this ordinance. They were allocated from the 2016 DQ loan, and we're rescinding that. Now the project's been completed, and we're moving it to Water and Capital Contingency Funds.
Okay, for whatever comes up--
Yes.
--that's needed. Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Please cast your vote.
Mr. Darby? Thank you. Motion carries. Introducing ordinance authorizing the appropriation of funds for the construction cost for the sewer sub-basin BC-20 rehabilitation project, for a total of $490,902.95 to come from the Sewer Capital Contingency Funds. First reading?
So moved. Second.
Questions from the audience? Questions from council? Please cast your vote.
Introducing ordinance to rescind ordinance number 82 of 2015. First reading? And the previous motion did carry.
If you feel like I can explain this as well?
What you looking for?
A second.
Second.
Thank you.
All right. Go ahead.
I'll draw. Have to get a cattle prod out, Ms. Hall.
Counsel-- I'm sorry.
Yes, it's done.
Okay, we good? Okay. Counsel, this rescends an older ordinance that was done in 2015, when we first made application to the state for the Highway 71 Phase Two lighting that Ms. Corley talked to you about, that we've been awarded finally after five years of applying for. So, none-- to my knowledge, I did not realize this was unfunded still, but I'm using that same ordinance as an application. So asking to rescind this ordinance number, and the next ordinance that you'll see puts those monies back in place for the match of the grant, and also allows us to enter into contract with Neil Schaefer, who had done the original design on these plans. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from the audience? Any further discussion? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance appropriating $436,782 as the required match for the state of Louisiana's facility and planning capital outlay funding for the Highway 71 Street Lighting Project Phase Two, and authorizes the city to enter into an agreement with Neil Schaefer, Inc., to provide professional engineering services for the design and construction services to the city for said project. First reading?
So moved. Second.
Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a Labor One for Parks and Recreation. First and final reading?
So moved. Second.
Questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one police officer for the Bossier City Police Department. First and final reading?
So moved. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. A public hearing concerning the city's application to the United States Department of Justice to participate in the Edward Bryan Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program.
Like to open the public hearing? Is there anyone here to speak? Yep, looks like we'll close the public hearing.
Adopt a resolution endorsing the city's application to the United States Department of Justice to participate in the Edward Bryan Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program. First and final reading?
So moved. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution-- Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one traffic control lead technician for Traffic Engineering Division due to resignation. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Ben, I'd just like to. You ain't gotta come up. You know, my power's been going on a lot, three times last week, and it was a, you had a, I can't think of the guy's name, but he was there to meet me and David attended with Mark and them. And a, a guy, he's a, he's a good person, good person to have, and I think we want to try to get upgraded that intersection right there by my house at Central Park and Highway Seventy-one, so, or Barstow Boulevard. So I worked with him on, I mean, he's, like I said, he did a good job out there the other night with SWEPCO, even though it took SWEPCO four hours to get there, but, you know, for a five-minute job. I just want to recognize him.
Mr. Williams, what is your vote?
Uh, after opening my mouth, my vote is yay yay.
Thank you. Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the promotion of a, one chief of special operations to replace a position due to retirement. First and final reading.
Second.
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 Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Approve change order, first and final, for the twenty-nineteen asphalt street program, an increase of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand two hundred seventeen dollars and nine cents. Total of contract with increase six hundred twelve thousand six hundred sixteen dollars and twenty-two cents.
So move.
Second.
Is Gary here? Ben, can I gripe at you? No.
Yes, sir.
There was something else in there. You know, they, they started this project over a year ago. They was pulling off for about a year. Of course, as they laid the asphalt, the manholes were sticking up by the ground about that far. And then while they're, while they pulled it off, of course, that road was getting tore up, you know? I mean, it's just deteriorating before, because I take kids home from football, baseball over there, and it was horrible. But looking at that, looking, I had, there was another slip on my computer. I can't, I can't seem to find it here. They come back out, had, we had, they charged us for patching the road that they already laid that didn't last after a year. I mean, I know you weren't there doing your job at this time, but, you know, I just, a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, that's like a third of the project for patching and just fixing some, I think we talked to you about that, uh, over in.
Was it, is that job, is that bonded? I'm sure it is.
But, I mean, we, so we showed, we got charged.
Well, I mean, there's a, normally a two-year maintenance bond that goes along with the performance and payment bond, which guarantee.
Normally.
Normally.
I know, I know if Jeff could hear us, he would be chiming in, because we talked about this for a whole year, like, where are these, why aren't they coming back, you know, things.
I'd like to know what this, on the bonds and the maintenance and.
I didn't sponsor that ordinance.
Yeah, we know.
Yeah, I don't know.
He could have somebody research.
About all of that, but I, I went out down Full Love Friday, um, at the request of, uh, Councilman Darby and noticed, you know, it was nice, fresh, clean asphalt, looked good. And I was out really speaking with, uh, KADA out there at the, at the end of Full Love. And what you're communicating to me is interesting, because that's exactly what the director of KADA was saying. He's like, I don't know what happened or what was going on with the asphalt, but it laid bare and wasn't any good for a long, long time, so.
Well, they, they pulled it off, I think, because Arkla had to do something there with the railroad tracks, you know? I think that's what Gary told, told me. And, and like I said, in the time, they, they got pulled off, it started deteriorating. Like I said, they finally come out, people hit their car down there on the manholes and, and, you know, but.
I'm assuming that there was more than just that street.
Yeah, they did, uh, about three of them over there.
Okay.
They had some lifts about two inches high that needed to be fixed too.
Who was the contractor?
I read it a while ago on my computer.
I'll find out.
Yeah, um, I want to say it was best. I want to say it's best yet, wasn't it?
So do we want to continue this until we get the answer?
No, I mean, I, well, we just need to check on while we're getting charged with the patching job.
Benton and Brown.
Beverly Cynthia, it's on the ordinance there, Ben. Beverly Cynthia and, uh, and Gibson Street.
I'll dig into it.
Okay, thank you, man.
Well, in, Mr. Erwin, well, it, Mr. Hall, what if, I mean, if we signed off on the change order, which obviously we did, and didn't contest whether it was warranty or in the warranty two-year period, we're legally obligated to pay, is that right?
Right.
Mr. Darby just texted me and wanted me to reiterate that he's brought this to the administration's attention several times, and there's a lot of emails between myself and administration and Mr. Darby concerning this.
Well, if we're legally liable, then, you know, we.
So what you're saying is.
We have to pass.
We've gone out and inspected the work.
Yeah, that's what I was, yeah, and I mean, we signed off on it. We should have contested it as, within the warranty period when it was done.
Well, we, we, we should have contested it. When they got pulled off and that road started deteriorating, before they came back, started again, that's when it should have been contested evidently, because now we're.
I don't know. It, it almost sounds to me like there was a, like a, like a base course put down, like they milled up the street and laid maybe an inch and a half or so of asphalt down, left all the, you know, manhole lids and everything proud, and something happened before they put the wearing course down. They usually roll that in a couple of lifts. So it sounds like between the time they got the first layer down and then came back, once all this G-Wiz stuff was done, yeah, I mean, that, that first course isn't designed to be a, you know, permanent pavement to drive on for a year. It's.
Well, we kept, me and Jeff kept asking, when are they coming back? When are they coming back? Well, they'll be here soon. Well, it was, it was a year or more. So did we get the shaft? Yeah, I think we did.
Well, I think at this point, um, we're obligated to pay the amount and, but we should, as Mr. Darby requested and Mr. Williams, that we ask the administration to follow up and give us a, an account of what happened.
It's plausible they've already been paid. I don't know, but it's very plausible.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying we're obligated to pay it, so we're, right now, we're going to let the administration have it and they can report back to us as to the, what happened. All right?
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion?
I'm just gonna hang out up here's a bunch of these.
Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Approve report of change order number two for the U.S. Highway Eighty Improvements Project, an increase of eight hundred fifty-five thousand five hundred twenty-five dollars and six cents. Total of contract with change order, twelve million two hundred seventy-four thousand two hundred sixteen dollars and ninety-eight cents.
This is the Walter OBB Carriageway Phase One.
So move.
Seem like a lot of things were left out in that, evidently, the, uh.
We need a second.
I'll, I'll second.
So, the prior ordinance to this was for one point two million. This change order, this is why, um, a, a large majority, if not all of that money, has already been approved prior to us taking on that office with no formalization between the engineer's office and the council. So, um, had a lot of meetings on that. That was a pretty big surprise to me, um, because there was an ordinance presented to the council not that long ago for a little less than half a million for a few odds and ends out there. And I, I was of the opinion we were flushed up, time, money, and, and we're good, but, um, that's not the case. This change order will, and the ordinance, is designed to kind of look down into the crystal ball and make sure we've got all our bases covered without having to come back to the council until we reconcile the project at the end. But it's dozens of, of items out there, um, that need to be reconciled.
Oh, man, it was, it was drainage things, there's pipes, there's, I mean, it was.
Yeah, there, there, believe it or not, I mean, it's a big number, but all of the water unknowns ran around a hundred and fifty, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars to get that, you know, and that's old, old infrastructure. There was a, I guess that used to be where Public Works had their operation in and around where Police Seven and Storage Building is now. So they encountered a lot of debris and junk that had to be pulled out of the ground, just a lot of stuff. Um, I've got Fortin de Blada involved now with some of these things. I want to make sure they're well aware of the decisions that were made, past, present, and, and going into the future, that they'll be engaged on that, because they're the design professional record on the project, need to be involved in that. So, uh, met, met with Best Yet Construction several times. Um, the project's a little behind schedule, you know, trying to get all of that moved and pressed, and, and, uh, they seem to be turning a corner. Most everything they're doing now is up above ground, so, um, there shouldn't be too many more surprises out there, but, um.
I just think it's something, you know, that we need to be cognizant about, you know?
Yes, sir.
These big changes, I'm, you know, anyway.
Yeah, this one would, you would have run out of money, uh, before the project was done, the way, way it was headed.
All the more reason for the value that Mancheck brings to managing Phase Two NOR, because it's four times the size of this project, so.
Any more questions on that one?
I got one for Phyllis. I just got knocked offline.
Are you playing with your computer?
No, I was talking to Ben. You know me, I'm computer illiterate. Ah, who's the one I play with right there?
No.
Hey, hey, hey.
I have a motion by Mr. Erwin and a second by Mr. Williams.
Any further discussion from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Approve report of change order number one for the Arthur Ray Teague Parkway Lighting Improvements with an increase of fourteen thousand eighty-eight dollars and forty-three cents for a contract price with change order of a hundred and sixty-two thousand eighty-eight dollars and forty-three cents.
So move.
Second.
I hear all the lights are working now. Talked to your guy the other night.
And this is, I don't know if you guys are aware, there was, again, a lot of unknowns out there. So that fourteen thousand was to address a lot of subsurface issues that we didn't know about, frankly, a good number. Uh, we were prepared for much worse than that. Yeah, the lights look great, so.
Let's pay for that copper that was stolen, huh?
Right.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Approve report of change order number two for the Meadowview Concessions Building Project with an increase of forty-one calendar days.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Approve report of change order number one for the Bossier Animal Control Building Improvements with an increase of ninety-one thousand three hundred seventeen dollars and twelve cents for a contract price with change order of one million three hundred ninety-eight thousand one hundred ninety dollars and twelve cents, and with seventy-two calendar days added to the contract time.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? I have Mr. Rush in back.
Just want to make note on those days, because I'm negotiating now with several contractors on more time due to weather delays. Those seventy-two days were related to those three change order items that accounted to ninety-one thousand plus COVID, where they didn't work. So they're, I'm looking at several projects where contractors are behind. You can't argue. It's been raining, raining, raining up until this month, so we're trying to come up with the gospel on how many rain days occurred, because every contractor seems to have a different accounting of when it rained and when it didn't. And then I'll be back before the council to get all of that, uh, fleshed out.
Thank you, Ben.
I have a motion by Mr. Erwin and a second by Mr. Larkin.
Any further discussion? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Approve report of change order number two for the Tinsley Park Expansion with an increase of twenty-two thousand two hundred thirty-seven dollars and forty cents for a contract price with change order of one million one hundred eighty thousand two hundred thirty-seven dollars and forty cents, and with sixty-nine calendar days added to contract time.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Approve report of change order for Innovation Drive Extension Phase Two Project with an increase of three hundred and seven thousand three hundred forty dollars and fifty cents for a contract price with change order of ten million five hundred thirteen dollars, five hundred thirteen thousand three hundred nine dollars and fifty cents, with an increase of eighty-six calendar days to the contract time.
So move.
Second.
Real quick, just update on this, just so y'all are aware. I don't know how much detail you looked at that, but the lion's share of that change order is for the lighting, uh, that's going in along Innovation Drive. Uh, about two weeks of that time is in addition to the amount of time that, um, especially track hose requested for COVID, weather delays and things like that. Uh, so far, that project's going smoothly. We expect all the paving to be done out there by the end of this month.
When will it be open?
Hopefully by the end of this month. Weather pending. Yes, sir.
What about, um, Swan Lake finishing that Monica lot to two-twenty?
Uh, I don't have my master list. I'll be giving a report to y'all, um, next council meeting, and that'll be, you'll be on there. There, that project's scheduled to be complete by the end of this year. It's a DOTD project. It's set up based on working days, so by working days, they're wildly ahead of schedule, but that's just because the weather has prevented them from working, and that doesn't count against them. So, uh, they're making pretty good hay. They're about eighty percent complete based on what I've looked at, and, uh, they seem to be on target to complete by the end of the year.
Why did they not, uh, they were going to close on the new two-twenty Monday? They did not?
I don't know.
No ideas. Pam, you don't know?
I know that they're.
They did it from the night.
Yeah.
Till five in the morning.
Yeah, that's right.
And they did a saw cut.
Oh, that's it?
Yeah, it's been like a, it's not the, the. Pu- press releases on that, maybe be interpreted differently by different people, but.
Okay.
It was just for a day, you know, closure for them to do. It's not, yeah.
So they did it, okay.
Yeah, they, they seem to be capitalizing with some of this more improved weather we've got.
Okay.
Any further discussion from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
All right, I believe the mayor had something that he would like to share with us regarding the governor's report today.
Yes, counsel, uh, the governor's gone to two press conferences a week now, and just had one just prior to this council meeting, and, uh, he announced that, uh, although there've been some slight improvement, we're not meeting the gating criteria to get out of Phase Two to go into Phase Three. So he announced that he will be formally putting it out on Thursday, that we will be extending our stay in Phase Two until, for three, for twenty-one days. And I'm assuming that's from, from the seventh, which would put it to the twenty-eighth of August. So, uh, there are indications that the curve to begin to flatten and the hospitalizations are reducing, but we're not there to meet the gating criteria from the federal government. So the decision has been made that we cannot come out of Phase Two until end of August, around twenty-eighth of August, and I just wanted y'all to be aware of that.
Mayor, can you get David to stop partying and running around without no masks and stuff out of, playing golf?
I'm working on that, counsel. Any question or comment? Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. I believe Phyllis had, no?
It'd have to do it at first, in the front of the meeting.
What now? What now?
It has to be done in the front of the meeting.
Oh, it does? The, the reading? You didn't tell me that.
We did do it at the front.
No, you got a B on there, you went to Bossier, that's wrong.
Bubba, that's for bubba.
You notice the color of that mask?
It's gray.
Also, what I would, I would like to address, since we won't have a meeting prior to the property tax renewal, which there's been, um, obviously some misinformation printed and shared, and the mayor had a fantastic meeting with the two chiefs, but at this meeting, I would like to reiterate the facts of the six point one nine millage renewal, which has been on the books for two years at six point one nine. So, in fact, it is a renewal. When it was raised from six to six point one nine, that was done by the tax assessor. So, and this money does not go for raises, it goes for the ongoing continuing salaries of our police and fire departments, which we dearly depend on, given the state of affairs that our communities are having to deal with today. So, I implore people to please support this renewal so that we can maintain the police and fire force that we have all grown accustomed to and taking care of us. And for the record, I would like to remind people, Mr. Hall, if I'm incorrect, please let me know that people fail to mention is we're a little over twenty-three mills. And I don't believe that the property taxes in Bossier City have been increased over thirty years, is that correct?
Correct.
I don't know too many communities that can relish in, in the public safety that we enjoy and know that we have not raised property taxes in over thirty years. And I, I just would like for the people to know that and know the facts, and if you have any questions, please call the city council office, the mayor's office, email us, call us, because we're here to share the facts with you. And again, I ask that each of you support this renewal so that we can maintain the public safety that we've all come to enjoy. I'd welcome any other further comment.
Thank you, Dave.
I'd just like to make one comment, I think it was reiterated by the mayor in the interview that made, that we're a Class One Fire Department at no expense to the public over what our, our recurring expenses were. That was a job done by both, between utilities and the fire department to get us raised to a Class One, and I, I think that's a, a huge step on behalf of the citizens at no expense. When before, it required a huge amount of manpower, it required nothing but coordination with regard to the flow of meters and the utility system and, and staying on top of that, so...
Which, by the way, and we'll carry that a step further, that means more money in all the businesses and the taxpayers of Bossier City's pocketbook, because you save on insurance rates. And nobody likes insurance, and, you know, I'm the guy that sells that stuff, so I know how people feel. But anyway, just know that because of that, and the funding and the work that our utilities department and our public safety have done, you're saving money back on your insurance premiums. Thank you.
Does that mean we don't like you?
Yeah, I've gotten used to that. All right, everyone, have a great week.
Mr. Gordon.